Welcome to the May 5th, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight, we will have, we will start off with Lieutenant Greg Bach saying the invocation. Greg is the Lieutenant of the Salvation Army of Muscatine. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Lord, we just thank you for this day. God, we recognize today is the National Day of Prayer. And as we come together, Lord, to do your business for the city. God, I just pray your blessing about each council member here. Councilmen, councilwomen, the mayor, city manager, Lord, the department heads. God, I just pray that you would pour out your spirit on them, Father. Give them clarity of thought as it do the city's business. God, give them compassion in their hearts. God, open their eyes to see things a little differently, God, that they may not have seen them before. We pray, God, that you would protect those in this room, God, who serve the public. God, we, we just ask that you hold them under your hedge of protection, God, from the, the firemen to the policemen, God, the EMTs, paramedics, and every public servant in this city. God, we just pray, Lord, that you would just watch over them, keep them safe, let them return home safe to their families at night. God, I pray, Lord, that you would give our city council, Lord, wisdom and guidance. God, give them new, new vision, God, new wisdom, deeper wisdom, deeper understanding, God, and fresh inventions and strategies, God, to move this city forward. God, I pray for everyone in, pray for everyone in this city, God, from the CEO, Lord, to the drug addict on the street this very minute, Lord, that you would help us make decisions as a city, as a city council and as city members, citizens of this great city of Muscatine. God, I would look out for the best interests of our, of each other, of our fellow man, our fellow woman, our fellow citizens. God, let us always see people how you see them, Lord, as people that are in need of love, grace, and compassion. Father, I thank you that you're pouring out your, your, your spirit on this city. I thank you, God, for these members, for the people gathered here today, God, for every person represented in this room that'll go back to their neighborhoods within this city. Let them go back in protection. Let them go back with an understanding, Lord, that we are here, Father, to move this city forward, just to help make life better for our citizens. And I thank you for your blessing. As it rained today, rained in the forecast, God, I just pray that your blessing, your, your provision, your abundance, God, would rain and saturate this city, cultivate the soil of our souls, Father, and open us up, Lord, for, for what you would have for us. Thank you for this city. Thank you, Father, for the work of the Salvation Army in this city. And thank you, Lord, for who you are, that you hear our prayer, that you move on our behalf. So, Lord, have your way in this council, have your way in this meeting, have your way in this city. As the song goes, you are Lord of this city, you are King of these people, you are God of this city. So have your way, in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
And I just, I saw Facebook yesterday and saw that, you know, you guys will be moving on, but I just want to say thank you so much, Lieutenant, for you and your family and all the things that you have done for this community. You and your family have been a huge blessing to us all, so thank you. Thank you. Next, we will do roll call. Cinda, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Freilich.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Present.
Seven present, zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Today, we will have several special guests presenting the American flag. Please welcome the Fire Island Robotics of Muscatine and their two robots. And will you please stand as the flag is presented? And may I please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm going to invite the robotics team to, to come up and say a few words, and I think you have a couple examples to show. Yeah, if you want to stand at the podium, that'd be great. Thank you.
We are going to do a quick little demonstration of what our robot was tasked to do this year. We are going to pick up a few of these big tennis balls that you see right here in the front of the room, and we are going to shoot them into the balcony, which is really fun to watch. So, in the back here, we will be driving it, and then right up here, you'll have the show.
Oh, good catch.
Human error.
Great job.
Great job, guys. And would you, would you like to share really quick how Houston went up against the world?
Houston went great. We got the, we got the, ooh. We got the opportunity to meet new teams, see different robots, you know, and experience different connections, you know. It's a great opportunity to learn new skills as well, also new ideas for our robot for the future. It's like a great opportunity for everyone to learn, you know, different skills like communication skills, adapting coding skills, and it was amazing, the different, like, countries. There was 13 countries right there. So it was great.
That's great.
I, just to echo everything Jacina said, it was a great opportunity in not only just the robots, but how to network and find other teams. I got, I actually got a Snapchat from somebody that lives in Israel. I thought that was really cool, and we were talking about how to build a robot and kind of, you know, how to process and not only, yeah, we made it to Worlds one year, but they're one of the teams that consistently makes it. So how did you make it, and how did, what steps do you take to consistently make it? And I think that was one of the coolest things, being there as all of the countries and being able to network.
So this year is actually my first official year on the team, and to go to Worlds, your first year, is pretty cool. And I just loved everyone, like, all the teams there, because we all have one thing in common, and that's that we love building robots. So it's just like a, just a big fun little hangout, and, yeah, it was a really cool experience.
Yeah, I think going to Worlds has been a great opportunity for us, and the whole theme of First Robotics is cooperition, which is, and professed racial, professed...
Racial professionalism.
And so we've had help from other teams, and we've been able to help other teams, and I think that's been great for our team.
Any questions from the council or...
Any questions?
Just congratulations. I mean, what a, what a feat.
Yes.
Thank you. So this team has been in existence for six years. My name is Chris Hoffman, I'm a Stanley consultant, so the team's been in existence for six years, and they just keep getting better and better every year, and they do a lot in the community as well, a lot of outreach, STEM outreach, so promoting STEM. The robot here in front of the mayor is from Jefferson Elementary School, and he's programmed to lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance, but we couldn't get the Wi-Fi to work tonight. So that, that robot was purchased by Jefferson Elementary School, and these students figured out how to program Miles, they call him Miles, Muskies Invested in Learning Every Second. So that's his nickname. And based on that training, and then training the teachers at Jefferson, the teachers now teach the sixth graders, the sixth graders do things with Miles to the, with the other students, and Miles reads books, reads books to students in the, I'll, I'll say the term autistic spectrum class, I don't know if that's exactly right, but it's, the stimulation is just right, is my understanding, I'm not a teacher, but without all the facial expressions and so forth, and so, a lot of neat things happening in Muscatine with technology, and this team is all about technology. So any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we would just say thanks to, to everyone in the community that supports the team. You know, every year, there's, there's organizations and individuals that support the team, and then this year, when we kind of got surprised that we're going to the World Championships, and we had about 10 days to be on our way to Houston, the community really came out and supported the team, so thank you so much.
Could we get a picture with you up front, if that's okay, everybody?
All right, let's get a picture.
Do you guys want to come up to you?
No.
Get in the picture.
I just keep waiting for it to jump off.
They're the ones that need the recognition.
Takes a village.
That's right.
So you should just tuck over here.
Is somebody controlling Miles, or is Miles, like, moving on his own? I said, is Miles, like, somebody controlling him, or is he...
No, it's just kind of...
He's waiting for it to jump off.
Thank you. Bye, Miles. That was fun.
All right, next item is, item four, is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, and we'll move on. Next item is five, is a consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in the normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items 6A, items 8A through N, items 12A through D, and tonight's bills totaling $1,910,655.28?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Lewis.
Second by Gordon.
And a second by councilmember Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next, we will move down to public hearing. 7A, this public hearing concerns the proposed zoning changes for the 1900 block of Stewart Road. Musco Lighting has submitted an application to rezone a 17.4 acre parcel from M2 General Industrial and R3 Single Family Residential to M2 General Industrial to enable expansion of their manufacturing options, operations. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here and none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Hopkins.
Second, Freilich.
And a second by councilmember Freilich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next, we have four proclamations. Let me move this. The first proclamation is the Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated the week of May 11th through 17th of 2022 as National Police Week, and the Wednesday of that week as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and whereas the members of the Muscatine Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our community, and whereas, since the first recorded police death in 1791, more than 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including four members of the Muscatine Police Department. And whereas the men and women of the Muscatine Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Dr. Brad Bark, Mayor of the City of Muscatine, call upon all citizens of the community, upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th through the 17th of 2022 as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of the community may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion and their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Muscatine to observe May 11th as Peace Officers Memory Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service in their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. And we're going to have Assistant Chief Snyder come to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you so much.
Every year, we, about this time, we get, we go through our procedures and our celebrations for Officer Memorial Week, holding that for our officers of our department as well as others. I'd just like to take a quick moment to recognize the four Muscatine Police Officers and one Muscatine County Deputy that have made the ultimate sacrifice within our community. First is Officer Thomas Moore. He was walking his beat along an area known as Ogilvy Hill, which is now the area of 9th and Oak Street, when he was struck by lightning and killed instantly. Officer Moore was 31 years old and left behind a wife and two children, and he was just the second officer in the state of Iowa to be killed in the line of duty. Officer Jacob Nybert, on June 13th of 1896, at approximately 2:00 AM, was in the area of the Hershey Train Platform and engaged two hobos that he had encountered. He attempted to arrest those two, there was a struggle, and Officer Nybert was shot and killed. Prior to, to passing, he was able to give officers a description of his assailants. Officer Nybert was 55 years old at the time. Officer Theodore Gershur, on November 26, 1911, Officer Gershur was on patrol shortly before midnight when he encountered five men in the area of West 3rd Street in Spruce. They were involved in a disturbance that was connected to a labor dispute. When Officer Gershur confronted him, one of the males took off running, he chased after him, he fired a warning shot, the man stopped. As Officer Gershur was approaching him, the man unexpected, or unexpectedly produced a revolver and shot him in the head. He was pronounced dead at about 5:15 that morning, but the subject, subject was later captured in Rock Island the next day. Assistant Chief Menzo Grady, on July 4th, 1947, was working the annual 4th of July Soapbox Derby when one of the racers lost control and crashed into the crowd. Assistant Chief Grady ran approximately three blocks in 100-plus degree weather to render aid. As he was rendering aid to the injured woman, he suffered a fatal heart attack and died. Edward Halligan, Deputy Edward Halligan, on November 9, 1998, Deputy Halligan was attempting to take a juvenile into custody on a psychiatric committal order. The juvenile fought with Deputy Halligan and tried to escape his hold. In the midst of the struggle, Deputy Halligan suffered a fatal heart attack and died at the scene. To our five local officers and many more across the country like them, we want to offer our gratitude and respect for the ultimate sacrifices they have made. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is the Historic Preservation Month. Whereas the United States, whereas in the United States, May is National Historic Preservation Month, a month dedicated to recognizing historic preservation and an effective tool for promoting sustainability development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, promoting tourism, and maintaining community character, and whereas people saving places is the theme for the National Preservation Month of 2022. And whereas the City of Muscatine values the preservation of the buildings and the history, and whereas it is important to acknowledge and celebrate the benefit of history, architecture, archaeology to our, to our lives and to contributions made by individuals dedicated to preserving the city's heritage. Now there, now therefore, I, Dr. Brad Bark, Mayor of Muscatine, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as National Historic Preservation Month, and we have Mr. Devon to come up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission, I would like to invite everyone to the Historic Preservation Awards, which is our yearly annual thing. On May 14th, from 2:00 to 4:00, the Musser Museum, we'll be handing out those awards and hopefully having our world premiere of our second video concentrating on historic downtown churches. Last year, you may have seen the One Arn Homes in Muscatine, and that has been playing throughout the year on Channel 5. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next is proclamation for EMS Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas emergency medical services systems consist of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is important to recognize, appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week now. Therefore, I, Dr. Brad Bark, Mayor of Muscatine, in recognition of this event, to hereby proclaim the week of May 15th of 2021, 20, May 15th to 21st of 2022 as Emergency Medical Services Week, and we have Chief Evers to come up and accept.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We always recognize EMS Week in May, and we always do Fire Prevention Week in October. President Gerald Ford initiated EMS Week back in 1974, and we've been recognizing it and honoring it ever since. We have some talented staff in the Fire Department that does EMS day in and day out, and the last couple of years has been pretty tough dealing with the pandemic. So just want to thank the staff for what they do day in and day out. It's been tough, not just on them, but on their families. So again, this is a good opportunity. If you see them out on the streets, thank them for what they do, because you got some good paramedics and EMTs working for you. We're going to be looking at doing EMS a day like we normally do out at Farm and Fleet, so again, more information to follow through social media when we have our event back out at Farm and Fleet. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Next is a proclamation for National Public Works Week. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as maintenance of sewers, streets, public buildings, and vehicles, snow removal, traffic control, engineering, transit service, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Dr. Brad Bark, Mayor of the City of Muscatine, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st of 2022 as National Public Works Week, and we have Brian Steinman here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to express our gratification for this recognition. On behalf of the Public Works Department and on behalf of my staff, I'd like to thank all of them as well. These are folks, men and women, who do a lot of often unnoticed jobs around town. Mr. Mayor Bark listed those, so I won't list them here again, but we take pride in our work, and when we, when we do it well, nobody notices, and when we don't do it well, you notice right away. So we want to make sure that we, we do it as well as possible. This isn't for a couple of weeks, but if you see one of our folks out in the street in the big white trucks or the big yellow trucks, just give them a thanks and tell them you appreciate what they do. I'm sure that they'll appreciate that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. All right, next item is 11A, which is a second reading of an ordinance adopting cargo container regulations prohibiting the placement of cargo containers in residential areas and requiring the cargo containers currently placed in residential areas comply with a specific standards. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Brockert.
We have a motion by councilmember Brockert.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion?
Go ahead, John.
Well, I think we need to consider the, that part of the, the recommended code about opaque fencing and to the, limit that and make that a little more workable, some parameters on that for people in the city that already have containers, and they're in an area that is not offensive or an eyesore to the residents that, you know, they live next to, and, you know, what I, what I read in the code right now...
And, you know, what I read in the code right now is screen from abutting properties and right-of-way through the use of one, a combination of the fence or the vegetation. And I'm not so sure that that's quite the right way to say that. I've had some discussions, maybe Peggy or some, but...
To your point, John, I was going to ask that we get some clarification on what those fencing requirements are, since I believe we have different definitions. And if Andrew could help us come and explain, because there's confusion as to if it requires coverage fencing on three sides of the container, on one with the adjoining property. Can we get some clarification?
Mayor, Council, so the intent of this portion of the regulation is that when viewed from off the, from outside the parcel that it's placed upon, that there's six-foot solid of something between the viewer and the cargo container. It could be a fence, a wall, vegetation, a building, whatever combination.
But, and I guess I, you know, I question the front of a container would be visible. But we're asking a container owner to screen the front of the container and impede their progress in and out of the container that they've been using for years and years in the city? I don't, am I saying that right?
Well, the basic intent would be placed in your backyard behind a gate.
So people who already have a container in their yard are going to have to move it?
Would have to build a fence around it.
But if the, if the opening to the container is near the street or in an area where, you know, it makes it difficult to get into the container, is that...
In almost all circumstances, no, because the other two points, one in what's in the proposed code and one what's in the current code. In the proposed code, the only cargo containers have to be located behind the front building line. So there would be none in the front yard. Then the other piece of it, if you look at our fencing code, at all points in the side and rear yard, it allows six-foot side solid fences. And also, in the front yard, allows fences that can be up to six feet so long as it's 25 feet back. And the other requirement is that these cargo containers be 25 feet back from every property line. The one instance where that could potentially be a problem would be if it was lined up with the front of the building and the building was exactly 25 feet from the front setback. But I don't think that's a too terribly common thing. And there's always the zoning board of adjustment deal situations such as that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, you can.
Hopefully, I won't divert too much from what we're talking about. My confusion is we're asking them to paint the cargo container to match their house or to match the building. And then we're telling them they have to put up a fence or have something else to cover it. And it's like, I know, and I'm just thinking about the gentleman that lives off of, I mean, his are in the back, like in the... And they're, they're, they're actually beautiful. They match the house exactly. They're well-kept. Are we now asking him that he's got to build a fence or have greenage? Because I feel like it's like we're asking the community member already to paint it so that it's not an eyesore. And now we're going to say, not only do you have to do that, but now you have to cover the one side up that's facing your neighbor's house. That was, that's my only concern.
I mean, that is what it says. And the rationale behind that is even a six-foot-high fence, there's still a significant portion that'll stick up there. They're higher than six feet. And a lot of them come painted in colors that aren't typically found in residential areas. Red, you know, bright reds, oranges. They're allowed, but a lot of them, I mean, that was the original thinking. Obviously, you as council can, you know, remove some of those or modify those provisions as you wish.
Andrew, as to the fencing, can you remind us? I know we've done a lot of benchmarking on one of the other ordinances coming up tonight, but what have we benchmarked that other cities have done with containers when it comes time to fencing and the visual? Because I agree, the paint is, I mean, aesthetically more pleasing. We're trying to blend it into the environment, make it look like part of the homestead. But, and I'm not opposed to fencing either on a limited basis, but what are other communities doing that are similar when they allow the container?
It's a mix. There's some that do this. There's some that do just the painting. There's some that do just the fencing.
Like you said, a fence, a six-foot fence, it's going to stick up above the fence. Probably two to four feet, maybe, depending on...
That sounds probably about right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Andrew, do you see a situation where fencing or, you know, the shrubbery is not necessary at all?
Well, I think there are certainly situations where you have an adjoining property line, but because of topography, there's nobody back there.
Yeah, I didn't mean to, I guess, put you in a bad spot or anything, but Jeff and I looked at a container today that is not an eyesore to anyone in the neighborhood or neighbor or next to them or anything else. And then, you know, for us to require that person to put a fence up in front of that container where there's a public right-of-way and makes it, you know, difficult to get in and out of the container, I don't think is right. So I think, I don't know, there are some things about, you know, the fencing and the opaque, your shrubbery and so forth, I'd like to have some clarification on that and try to make it a little more workable for people who've had containers in town for a lot of years.
Assistant Administrator Webb, should we let this pass the reading and get some clarification or add?
Well, I don't feel like this is on very high. Can you hear me? Okay. I don't know that we have clear enough direction here to know what to come back with.
Right.
So I would say there needs to be some deliberation here to, even if you pass the reading, as is tonight, we need to know what to come back on the third reading. Otherwise, we'll come back with exactly what we have tonight. So if you want it to be modified in some way, we need some, the council to coalesce around some direction there.
I'd like, may I talk? I'd like to see, basically, I mean, I understand why we were talking about the fencing and all that. I'd like to see D just go away. I think when you're looking at that, we've already asked the owner to paint it so that it matches their house. That should make it eye appealing. I mean, as long as they aren't, you know, their house isn't bright cherry red. I don't think I've seen any houses here. And I realize, Andrew, first of all, let me say thank you for all you've done. I realize you're, you're having to take what we tell you to do and make it work. So, but my suggestion would be to remove line, I guess it's line D, 2D, where it talks about how it shall be screened by having either the fencing or the vegetation. Because we've already asked them to paint it to match their housing or their house. So that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I certainly think that's a good suggestion to consider and so forth. You know, I just get the feeling that we're in some ways maybe overreacting to what we need to do to accommodate the concern that people have that the containers are ugly. I've made no, no question that I don't think containers are, should be allowed in residential areas from here on forward. But, you know, to maybe unfairly scrutinize and pick the current cargo container residence, some undue restrictions and so forth, I'm not so sure that's right. We've got, probably for every cargo container in town, we've got 50 garages that are dilapidated and look junky. And, and, you know, what are we doing to get those areas cleaned up? And how aggressively are we doing that? So, anyway, I think Councilwoman Lewis has a suggestion that we should certainly consider. You know, paint it, clean it up, level it, and move on, maybe. I don't know.
Any other thoughts on what the two councilmembers just talked about?
If we're going to leave it fully exposed like that, paint it once.
Yeah, there you go, too. And when do you have to repaint it? When the rust is this big or, you know, this big? So, you know, it's a good point, too.
And level it once on gravel. You know? Just some of the questions I've got, too, as long as we're opening up to scan worms, I mean...
We can over-engineer it. We can over-codify it. We've got to get to a point, either we move forward with something, or we pull it and...
And that's where I'm at. My point is there's an appeal process for everything. You know, this is a fairly simply written code, pretty straightforward. Yeah, it has a screening requirement. I think it's helpful. It'd be desirable for some of the folks that haven't, we haven't heard from for a while, who started out with, we don't want them at all. And then we've landed on, well, it's grandfatherly end, so, you know, we're trying to find middle ground. It's basically three requirements, level it, paint it, screen it. And, you know, we could pick at it all day long, but there is an appeal process that addresses some of these special cases that we're talking about.
Councilmember Brockert, do you have any thoughts about keeping the screening or...
Ideally, I would like to, but Councilmember Osborne and I had a discussion a couple hours before the meeting. And he pointed out that fencing is extremely expensive. I get that. I really do. I would be pleased if we could go ahead and make sure folks paint these things and then, you know, keep them up like you would your home. And that way, I think we'd satisfy or meet in the middle, perhaps, satisfy everybody's needs. I hope, you know, I hope that we can come to a compromise like that.
Any thoughts, Councilmember Freilich?
Well, I kind of tend to agree with that statement. I do think, though, that a real easy, simple method would be to plant some shrubbery around it that's inexpensive and allow them three to five years to get up to a six-foot screen. What differences make, as long as they're kept up. It's just a compromise also. I don't have an issue with that.
Any other thoughts? Councilmember Hopkins?
Is there some way, Andrew, to write that a certain amount of shrubbery has to be placed around your container to make it look more aesthetically pleasing? Because, you know, I'm not opposed to that either.
So, but the way it's written, that is one of the options that's presented in subsection D. I think it states they got to be 75% opaque year-round.
But it doesn't say anything about size when it's planted. And because there's a big difference between a two-foot shrub and a 12-foot, six-foot shrub.
If you plant a two-foot one that grows to six-foot, you're working on it, right?
There is language out there. If you wish, you can basically stipulate that it'll achieve a height of six feet within three years of planting or whatever period of time that you're willing to give. That, that would be very easy to write and bring back to you if that's the direction you wish to go.
Well, I think that would be a reasonable alternative to fencing. That's my opinion.
What do our folks out here think? Would that be agreeable to you all?
I don't know. Sorry, Mayor.
Sorry.
Come on up.
We'll just, we'll just have, we'll just have you talk.
Richard Havel, 1208 Lincoln Boulevard. Okay. Now, I'm talking for everybody with the containers. Some people are going to be financially strapped to do this. And I'm going to ask every one of you if you physically could do this yourself without hiring it done. Because that's going to be a problem for a lot of people that are elderly, disabled. And it just isn't going to work out. I mean, there's a lot of containers in town. There's one on 51st Street. It's a beautiful-looking container. And if you haven't noticed, there's one on Main Street. The Hy-Vee Main Street has one in its parking lot. It looks okay. I know that's not a residential area. And also, on University Avenue, Uptown Motorist just put in a used car lot, and they've got one for an office there also. And when they're painted up, they look presentable. So if we could just go with the painting and taking the logo off or lettering and have them match the houses, I think everybody could afford that. And I think as a whole, you could all do it yourselves, if you have a container. And that's all I have to say. It would create a financial hardship for a lot of people.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, Councilwoman Lewis's suggestion to make, you know, try to make sure the container is appropriately painted and leveled and kept up is... I would agree with that.
And striking the screening?
Yes.
Sound, sound okay?
Do we need to move to...
Is that enough direction?
Well, I still don't hear a common thread.
So what we're asking is to have 2D removed, which is the whole part on the, the, it's under Attachment A, where it talks about the cargo containers actually having to have a fence or vegetation. So that would, what we're asking is to have that removed so that all they would have to do is paint it and level it.
Yeah, I think, I don't hear that from the majority of the councilmembers here tonight. So I think if you want to remove that, you should amend the motion that's before you. That would give some certainty to us understanding what needs to be brought back.
I would like to motion to have that 2D removed and to amend the...
Did you already have a motion in a second?
We already did, yeah.
You have to amend the motion.
Yeah, basically, you'd have to amend the motion. So is there...
You want to amend the motion?
I'll...
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to amend the motion and to strike C 2D, the cargo container screening comments, from the updated ordinance, the proposed ordinance.
And I'll second that.
And we have a second, but Councilmember Lewis, is there any discussion regarding this amendment? Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Second, second reading of the ordinance...
Amended ordinance.
Amended ordinance, thank you, Cinda, is approved as submitted with all eyes.
So you've voted on the amendment.
And now we're going to be going, yep.
As amended.
As amended, yes. And now we go back to the initial one. I apologize, you guys. All right. And then we're going to do a roll call on the original motion. Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye with the amendment.
Hopkins?
Aye with the amendment also.
Gordon?
Aye with the amendment.
Freilich?
Aye as amended.
Brockert?
Aye as amended.
Gendrich?
Aye as amended.
And Osborne?
Aye as amended.
Second reading of amendment ordinance is approved with all eyes.
As amended.
As amended. You guys. All right. Next is 11B. Second reading of an ordinance amending Title 16, Chapter 8 of City Code regarding weeds and vegetation management. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to speak on one portion.
Yes.
I want to address the native prairie landscape area section. I'm not in agreement with the setback requirements of 25 feet and 15. I'd like to, and thank you, Andrew, for all the benchmarking that you did with the 20-plus communities. That really does help. I would like to propose a compromise. And again, it's just for the native prairie landscape. I'd like to see us have a mowing strip, like two mowing lengths, which would be about 42 inches from the sidewalk or from the street back. So we have a little cut to the eight inches or below, and then the... to the eight inches or below, and then the rest would be able to be maintained as the natural prairie landscape. So, I don't know if that's, uh, something we can, if anybody agrees with that. So again, if you look at a sidewalk instead twenty-five feet back, which could be to the front of the house, it could be past the front of the house, depending. I'm saying, forget that setback, and let's take it to a standard push mower with two of them, which is about forty-two inches from that sidewalk or from that street, is what I'm recommending that we modify the ordinance. Any thoughts?
I had earlier said that I wanted to set back to remain the same, but after thinking about it and looking around and everything like that, I think I could agree to that.
There are areas in town where twenty-five feet puts it into the house, and that's, that's just not, doesn't make sense. And there's areas that they're using the vegetation to hold a bank or something back, and it's next to the sidewalk. So I don't, I don't object at all to the twenty, or forty-two inch setback, period.
I agree.
You agree?
I concur.
So, I, we'll pass this reading with understanding that we'll set it back to forty-two inches.
A public comment.
We made a motion.
I'd just ask for one point of clarification on what you're looking at. When you say setback of forty-two inches, are you envisioning this from the edge of the curb? Or the edge of the property line? Cause there's a significant difference in.
From the sidewalk.
What was said was a sidewalk, or if there's no sidewalk.
The curb.
The, the curb.
Be the back, if it's a sidewalk, it'd be the back side of the sidewalk?
Yes, if the sidewalk farthest from this, edge farthest from the street.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to make, forty, okay, just make sure I understood what you're looking for.
Thank you. All right, councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Wait a minute, you got a public comment.
Public comment.
Absolutely.
Yep. Have you come on up? Name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Jean Clark, and I live at twelve twenty-one Mulberry Avenue. Back in February, I wrote, um, an email to staff with some questions and concerns, and I don't remember hearing back. And I believe my council member forwarded those to you, and I also don't remember hearing from anyone else regarding some of these. So, I'll raise a couple of them, I'm not gonna raise them all, you can go back and look, you should've received something late in February around. I wrote to staff February twenty-four, I would guess. Um, I heard from my council member February twenty-seven. So you might look and see then. But my concern about your ordinance is I'm glad to hear that you're talking about changing the setback. I also have a question, when is it a garden? Because gardens are okay, and when is it a prairie? I have a front bank that's very steep. I have prairie plants on it, but it's not a prairie. I see it as a garden, because I also have bushes, I have ground cover, and various things like that. And so, I guess, I don't know how you determine what's a garden and what's a prairie. I have friends that I know along their alley, they have, um, native plants that are, oh, you know, three feet tall. It's along the alley, they bloom, they look nice. But according to your ordinance, I think they could be cited for not having, having a mow within, you know, right there by the alley, or their, their driveway. And I guess the other thing is, I'll just bring up, a lot of cities in Iowa, because of pollinators and our, and their endangerment, are saying they're going with no-mow maize, where they say, don't mow your lawn in May when all of these things are coming up. I don't know if you guys would ever think about that. And there also are, we have a property in Ames, we have planted what's called ecograss there. It's a grass that grows to be about eight inches tall. Um, you never mow it. And it's, it's a grass, but you know, it may not meet your regulations. And so, as we're looking at the environment and what's going on, I want you to be sure you're not boxing yourselves in about, because turf is most likely going to be going out over the next twenty years, because of the fertilizers, the watering, and the gas that it takes to mow it. And those resources are going to become more and more precious, and we're gonna be looking at some different things. So, um, the other one, issues.
Thirty, thirty seconds, please.
Okay, I would just say, if you still have five days, that something has to be fixed five days from mailing, I have issues with that, because five days doesn't give someone long enough to get the letter and actually do something about it. We had mail held while we were on vacation, we had somebody else's mail. It sat in our pile for two weeks. You know, they wouldn't have gotten the notice. So, you might wanna think about extending it, so somebody has a weekend to work on it, or whatnot.
Thank you so much.
Just wanna, just make a comment on the no-mow May, because I noticed that Cedar Falls also is promoting that this month. Um, and it's optional. It's not something we'll be able to do this year, because we're already into May, but I'm looking at John Cook specifically to say, maybe it's something next fall we can start looking at to do in twenty twenty-three. For those people that are willing to do that. So, um.
Yeah, I, I was contacted by this by another resident and did a little bit of research on it. It, it's a good idea, but it needs to be managed.
Yeah.
Uh, there are, the cities that have done this, um, they, because the grass grows so thick in May, in Iowa, or in the Midwest, um, you have to actually have, um, a process by which you ramp back up to, um, meeting the regulations, right? So there needs to be some management of it, so I think we need to do some planning, and then we can talk about it for next May. But the studies, they did show that it significantly increases, um, you know, pollinator activity in your, um, you know, in your community, so.
So thank you, Jean, for bringing that up. I mean, I just saw an article yesterday, and, um, we have a pollinator champion in town, and I think we start talking about it.
Any other comments? Councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lewis?
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance is approved as submitted with all eyes. Next item is eleven C. Third and final reading of an ordinance establishing vacant property and non-residential property maintenance regulations in Title sixteen, chapter five of city code. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance on third and final reading and to direct for its publication required by law?
So moved, Freilich.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Freilich and a second by councilmember Gordon, is there any discussion? Hearing none, councilmember Gordon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
And Hopkins?
Aye.
Third and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all eyes. Next item is eleven D, third and final reading of an ordinance striking Title six, chapter nine of city code regarding the keeping of pit bulls. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance on the third and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, I have a few comments here. Um, so bear with me, guys. Though the request to repeal the breed ban in Muscatine was introduced at the beginning of COVID, we put it on pause, we had a lot of delays. Uh, but last year, it was sort of mentioned again that we need to refocus on being responsible pet owners. It wasn't just about the breed ban. And with that, we challenged the city to look at different options. And we said that the first thing that needed to be done was to review and revise our pet ordinances, so that we could strengthen them before we move forward with the breed ban. And I want to thank the city staff for doing that. I mean, last fall was very busy finding us options that led us to more of a behavior-based model, as opposed to a breed ban. But with that, I'm gonna start challenging the pet owners in town. It is now our responsibilities, the pet owners, to make certain that we are responsible pet owners and citizens. Our pets deserve a safe, secure, and healthy environment, proper vaccination and veterinary care, and a basic understanding of our local ordinances such as rabies vaccines and pet registration for city residents. Okay? The pets bring a lot of joy and comfort to our lives, and they deserve that from us. So with this, we're moving forward with being a stronger pet town. But that takes, we have to be responsible for doing that for our pet partners, so. That's just my challenge to the residents, so.
Councilmember Freilich?
I just have a little comment too. Um, this has been a long journey for the city. We've had a small group of advocates working for the removal of the ban on pit bull and pit bull breeds. They have to come, they have come to council with their reasons in a courteous and respectful appeal. We've had good discussions in a calm and productive manner. They have managed to persuade the majority of the council in their favor. I can appreciate their efforts, but I don't necessarily agree with their reasons. There is, however, a large group of citizens that have a desire to continue the ban. Unfortunately, most were not willing to express their opinions in public. Silence from the majority implies consent for lifting the ban. The lifting of the ban will impact the entire community, not just a few. It is not if, but when the next pit bull attack occurs. I wondered then if the silence would be heard. This is a safety issue. There was just a recently Kiwan, Kiwani man that was killed by his family pit bull. There is a difference between a chihuahua and a pit bull bite. As councilmembers, one of our duties is public safety. This issue certainly falls into that category. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a comment.
Of course.
Last Friday, the Kiwani, uh, Kiwani, Illinois man, in his home mauled by the family pit bull. The majority of people in Muscatine want to maintain a pit bull ban, or they are neutral on the issue. Our council job should be to vote on policy that ensures safety in the community. We should be voting seven zero to maintain a pit bull ban. There are three overwhelming reasons why a pit bull ban is the best thing for our city. Pit bulls account for almost seventy percent of dog-inflicted deaths in the United States. Pit bulls are the most likely dog to leave their property and attack and maul someone, or someone else's dog, or another dog. Pit bull bites are the most vicious da, uh, bites for surgeons to repair, uh, the most devastating wounds if you survive the attack. I am completely and, uh, at peace with making sure that everyone knows that I support a pit bull ban. I think the issue might be brought up again, we'll see how many incidences we have. And I'm going to be quite confident in my vote. When a mother, or a father, or a citizen comes up to the podium and shows us pictures of a family member that has been mauled by a pit bull, I will not be questioning in any way my vote to maintain a pit bull ban. It's the best thing for our city. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you so much. Any other comments?
I just wanna, um, thank, uh, this has been a hard thing to, to deal with. We've, we've actually, uh, I've gotten lots of feedback from the community. That's why I became a city council member, is to represent my community. The community that, that have reached out to me have been loud and clear about how they, they feel. I've done my research, and, uh, I will be supporting the removal of the pit bull ban, but I want people to realize that with that, we will now put the owner at a higher risk, meaning it's three and done. Meaning, if you don't have your pet licensed, rabies vaccinated, and the police have to come to your house, and it's three strikes and you're out, and you will no longer be allowed to have an animal in Muscatine. That would not mean just the dog, that would mean a cat or any animal. We have to be responsible owners. We have to make sure that they're licensed properly. So that's my big, my, my big concern is, it's like, I'm for doing this. I am aware of the, the gentleman in Kiwani, uh, he was actually, uh, watching the, um, his children's, he was in the house, watching his children's dogs, the two dogs were fighting, he actually tried to pull them apart. And it got bit, he actually called his, uh, family members that night, and they told him, and they said, if you need to go to the, the hospital, call the ambulance and go. He chose not to. So I think there has to be definitely responsibility on the owners, and we have to do what's right. So, um, with that being said, um, I will support removing the ban.
Well, I think that's been a big problem with the issue. Every time a pit bull kills somebody, it's the owner's fault, or, uh, some other excuse. Pit bulls are dangerous dogs. And, uh, there are a lot of family pit bulls that are probably nice dogs. But, uh, the facts remain. So, anyway.
One rebuttal there. Every time a dog harms or kills a person, the owner's responsible. Not... So this, correct that, where we've had some comments, some emails from people, they will tell us a pit bull was there, and another dog. Well, what was the other dog? You can't tell me, you choose not to tell me. Am I, but also goes back to pet ownership responsibility, know your breed. Do not select a breed just because it's a cute puppy. You have to know how to deal with it, how to train it, how to treat it. So, but anyway, I'm done, I'm sorry, John, I just like.
So if, if I may, um, our animal control officer, um, pulled a few statistics for us related to, um, enforcement of the new animal control regulations. Um, and so this data is, um, related to enforcement after March thirteenth, I believe, which is the date that the, uh, the new animal regulations passed. So we've had eighty-four citations for animal neglect since March thirteenth. Nineteen for rabies, uh, lack of rabies or ID, seven registration citations, seventeen at-large citations, three failure to complete a rabies quarantine, six vicious dog removals, so six dogs have been removed, one dangerous dog, and one irresponsible owner. So that, those state stats tell me we have some way to go for responsible pet ownership. So I think, you know, being out enforcing it, I think does help, um, but some education and awareness as well. And we're working on that, but I, I think that does highlight, um, sort of where we are as far as a community related to responsible animal ownership.
Thank you for the stats. Any other thoughts, discussion, before we vote?
Um, you might.
Councilmember Osborne?
I'll be brief. Um, is it a safety issue? You're twenty times more likely to get killed on a bicycle, or you're a hundred and twenty-seven times more likely to get killed just by walking down the street. Is it somebody else's choice to have a pit bull, and can that affect somebody else? Yes. Two-thirds of those folks on bicycles and, and pedestrians were killed by drivers who were driving too fast for the conditions, who made the choice to text and drive distracted, and other choices that they made while driving, it was a driver's fault. So, you know, is it a safety issue? I, I, I can't see it compared to, unless we're gonna ban bicycles and walking down the street. We are choosing to live in a community where we, we rely on each other, we rely on each other to be each other's, uh, brother's keeper, their sister's keepers. And we rely on each other to, to make the choices, and, and that's part of the beauty of the country we live in. So I don't see it as a safety issue, that's my personal take on the data. The next piece of data that I have is a little different than this silent majority conversation. I have walked door-to-door in my community, I have listened to folks that don't normally come forward, talked to them personally, one-on-one. I think it's a very close. I think it's a very close, very close, but slightly tipped towards lifting the pit bull ban. My personal opinion is put aside. There's some data that concerns me. I, I have some very believable data that if you are bitten by a, a dog, two thirds of the time, the pit bull will do more damage if not kill you. But that being said, that's kind of like the argument around, you know, riding a motorcycle versus a bicycle or, and I don't want to single anyone's choices out. But, you know, you can make arguments about various things. One thing's more dangerous than the other, but at the end of the day, we accept that risk. And so that's why for me, based on the data, it's not a safety issue. I do regret the day. If we were talking about tornadoes and I could ban tornadoes and we were talking about that and we were all saying, okay, let's lift the ban on tornadoes. I guarantee you tornado is going to come through town and we're going to hear about it. I think something like that's likely to happen here as well. I don't think it really changes the decision to live with a certain amount of risk in our lives.
Any other comments? Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Nay.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gindrich?
Nay.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Third and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with five ayes and two nays. Next item is eleven E. It's a first reading of an ordinance regarding zoning changes for the nineteen hundred block of Stewart Road. Is there a motion to approve this first reading of this ordinance as submitted? We have a motion by councilmember Hopkins.
Second, Freilich.
And a second by councilmember Freilich. Is there any discussion? Here or none. Councilmember Gindrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
And Brockert?
Aye.
First reading of ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is eleven F. It's a resolution awarding contract to Hugher Higher Construction, Inc. For the widening of a portion of the taxi lane at the Muscatine Municipal Airport. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So move Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gindrich. Is there any discussion? Here and none. Councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gindrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
And Freilich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is eleven G. Is a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on amendment number two to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two city budget. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So move Brockert.
We have a motion by councilmember Brockert.
Second, Freilich.
And a second by councilmember Freilich. Is there any discussion? Here and none. Councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gindrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
And Freilich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next is eleven H. Resolution setting the date for the sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series twenty twenty-two and authorizing the use of the preliminary official statement in connection therewith. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So move Brockert.
We have a motion by councilmember Brockert.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion? Here and none. Councilmember Gordon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gindrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Minats in the amount of fifty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-five cents for the installation of a trail connection at Mustard Park as part of the Community Foundation of Greater Muscatine South End Improvement Fund projects. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So move Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon.
Second, Brockert.
And a second by councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion?
I just have a, a quick question. So I, as I was reading through this, so it looks like we estimated it fifty-five and it came back fifty-four. Is that correct? Okay. That's, that was my only question. Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is eleven J. It's a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Ed Morris Automotive Group in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars for the purchase of a GMC Sierra four by four truck for the parks and rec, for the park maintenance division. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So move.
We have a motion by councilmember Lewis.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion? Here and none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is eleven K. It's a request to enter into a professional services agreement with Water Smith Engineering not to exceed six thousand, one hundred dollars to design the city hall entrance step repair project. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So move.
We have a motion by councilmember Gindrich.
Second, Brockert.
And a second by councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion? Here and none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is eleven L. Request to enter into a professional services agreement with Water Smith Engineering not to exceed thirty-six thousand, one hundred dollars to design the Lake Park Boulevard Stormwater Improvement Project. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So move Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank Brian Steinman and his team for moving this forward. It'll be great when this is finally completed. Appreciate you getting it moving forward. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Here and none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is eleven M. Request to approve amendment to the contract with Bolton and Mink, Inc. For an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars to provide additional material testing services above and beyond what is in the original contract. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So move.
We have a motion by councilmember Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion?
I do have a question, Your Honor.
You bet.
For Brian. What, what are the extra material testing services that they're going to be providing for us?
And fair to come up here. So basically what happened with the testing so far to date, they've gone over the amount that they anticipated based on the quantity. So this will just be, it's, it's a compaction testing for the subgrade, concrete testing, plant monitoring, which we're unable to do at this time because we're, we're short staffed. So they go to the, to the actual, to the concrete plant and it takes, it takes a day to run the batches to make sure everything that comes out of the plant is what we will accept on the job site. So those numbers have gone over where we thought we would be. So this should take us to the end of the project with no further change orders for, for this aspect of it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Here and none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is eleven N, which is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Ed Morris Auto Group in the amount of twenty-five thousand, forty-five dollars for the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Chevy Equinox for the Community Development Department. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So move.
We have a motion by councilmember Lewis.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gindrich. Is there any discussion?
I'm just impressed that you could find a twenty-two Equinox at twenty-five hundred dollars, or twenty-five thousand dollars. Way to go. Thanks for saving the city.
Should have tires.
Have a steering wheel. There you go.
Is there any other discussion? Here and none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is eleven O. It's a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Dairy Brothers in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Toyota pickup for the Community Development Department. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So.
So move.
We have a motion by councilmember Freilich and a second by councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion?
So it looks like it's three thousand dollars more than what was allotted. Is that correct? Says there's a twenty-five thousand dollar in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. But yet the vehicle's going to cost twenty-eight. Is that correct?
This is Jody and yes.
Hi, Jody.
Yes, that it is over the estimated budget.
I believe this was from a group of vehicles that we were able to locate. We kind of took what was available. We, and then we moved the dollars. We had them in next year's fiscal budget.
Okay.
Fiscal year budget because we had our hands on them now. We, and they were reasonable price, but this one's slightly over.
Okay. I just want to make sure we aren't throwing our budget into.
No, the, with the, the state's not doing bids and normally we joined her with the state, use the state's bid and so we don't have that cost savings for, due to the, you know.
Okay. Thank you for explaining.
Thank you, Jody. Any other questions, comments? Here and none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is eleven P. It's a request to enter into a professional services agreement with Stanley Consultants for an amount not to exceed one hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars for the water resource recovery facility capital improvement planning project. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So move.
We have a motion by councilmember Lewis. Do we have a second? And a second by councilmember Gindrich. Is there any discussion? Here and none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. And we pulled item eleven Q from the schedule. Now we're going to head into eleven R. It's a request to approve change order number two for the West Hill Sewer Separation Project, Phase Five, by twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy cents. The change for the change order number two consists of adding a combination sidewalk retaining wall to the north side of Climber Street. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So move Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Hopkins. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say, in general, I appreciate the, the little blurbs that we get right before these meetings. Or actually not right before, almost sometimes Monday, Tuesday ahead of time and they're, and they're very helpful. This one's well done. And a lot of times it's like this meeting if I wasn't talking right now, so I'll be quiet.
You're fine.
But I appreciate that.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Here and none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is item fourteen, communications. Councilmember Lewis, do you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
I have two things that I'd like to share. First of all, I know with all the proclamations that went on today, the big thing I want to be, make sure, since it's near and dear to my heart today, or May is actually nursing month. So to all my nursing cohorts that have been out there working through COVID and doing their job tireless, tirelessly and showing up and masking up and washing their hands and all those things, I want to say thank you to them. And also the other part that's near and dear to my heart is I am a stroke nurse by profession. And today is stroke, and this month is stroke awareness month as well. So I always tell people know, know the signs and symptoms of stroke, which is fast. It's the FAST acronym, meaning if you look at somebody and their face doesn't look like it's right and it's dragging on one side. If their arm, if you have them lift up their arms and their arm starts drifting down on one side versus the other. And have them smile. If their smile isn't straight and it's hanging down. And the last part is T, which is time, which means call nine one one. It is a medical emergency. The really cool thing is in today's society, we actually have a medicine that can actually reverse stroke, which we didn't have twenty-five years ago. So the big thing is to get people, get your loved ones to the hospital so we can actually act upon that and hopefully make a, make a change so it's not disabling. Cause it is the number one disease that disables people. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Hopkins?
Nothing tonight, Dr. Mark.
All right. Councilmember Gordon?
Yes, I do have a request of my fellow council members. I'm asking for consensus from the council to direct city staff to extend the free one-year pet license for spayed and neutered dogs and cats until July one. It expired at the end of April. I'd like to see us start it again for another few months. I believe this will provide the city with an additional two months to encourage pet registration while we develop easier additional methods to purchase a license. We have to remember that the average cost for this one-year license for spayed or neutered pets is five dollars or three dollars for seniors. So it's a nominal cost. And I believe this will help us increase those registered pets, which is pretty important. So I'm asking for consensus.
Is there consensus?
Yeah, I'm, I'd be, I'm going to comment. I'm opposed to this. I think a five dollar registration fee is a nominal fee that is easily absorbed by a resident. We have all kinds of residents in town that have registered and licensed their dog the right way. And to start giving people a free license coincidentally with the night when we drop our pit bull ban, doesn't make sense to me. I mean, no offense to Councilwoman Gordon. I enjoy talking with Peggy about all kinds of issues. There's no question about that. Estimated one thousand, two hundred and forty pit bulls in the city of Muscatine. One pit bull?
She's asking for a consensus about just.
I'm saying why, I'm, I'm just voicing why I am not going to agree.
Okay.
I can't do that or no? That's okay. I can stop talking.
I appreciate it. Councilmember Lewis, consensus on?
I'm okay with increasing that till January or July one.
Councilmember Hopkins, any thoughts?
I agree with John. I don't agree.
Gordon?
I agree with Dwayne.
Okay. Councilmember Freilich? Just thoughts. Councilmember Brockert?
I don't mind extending it till July first.
Osborne, thoughts?
And this is a request to just put on the agenda for future discussion. Bring it.
I'd like to see us move forward with this because again, it's not as much the cost as it is we are looking at additional easier methods to get people to register. Because right now it's a very limited method. You come to finance department from eight to five, Monday through Friday. So, but give us another couple of months. So.
Okay. Well, I'm actually in favor of it for, actually for some of the reason that you kind of started talking about. We've got some, some owners out there that haven't probably been real forward with some of their pets. And it's a good time, a nice way to generate buzz and you've got a year and, you know, buy one, get one free or whatever it takes to get people to do this.
So there is a consensus?
Well, so I, I, I think I can actually do, make this decision administratively. I did previously, but given the, there seems to be some dissent on the council. I personally would prefer the council took a vote on it.
We can do it.
If that's all right.
We can definitely do a vote.
I think not tonight, but we can put it on the next agenda. I, we didn't include this on the agenda for this evening, so the public wasn't aware. I think personally I prefer that, I would defer to the mayor. But if we could put it on the next agenda and council could, could, could vote on it.
We can put it on the next agenda.
I have one further question. Did you say for a year or did you say till the end of this July?
No, it, it's a one-year license through, that you would be eligible to.
Spend it till July of this year.
Of twenty twenty-two, correct. I just wanted to clarify that it was the one-year annual license that they would be getting for. So the next vote would be not next week, but two weeks. So the next vote would be not next week, but two weeks.
Yeah, and I'll tell you why I say that is I'm not sure. I need to talk to the team and figure out if, if it was, if, did it ma- make a difference to offer it for free? I don't know if it did or not. So I need to assess the, because we did it for a month, right?
There's been three events that have offered it and were probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred license, but I don't want to speak for Nancy.
So I, I think I just need to talk to the group and find out if,
Sounds okay.
if the goal is to improve, increase the licensing, is that the right tool? So I, I just, I would say I need to assess it a little bit.
And we need to still look at the challenge to make it easier.
Councilmember Freilich?
And that, that might be, I'm sorry, that might be, it, that, it might be more that than the cost. I don't know that the cost is that big a barrier. I think it might be the, more about the ease of it.
Oh, yeah.
So rather than make a decision, I would suggest we evaluate it a little bit and then come back to the council.
Councilmember Freilich, anything you'd like to share?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Brockert?
Yes, I have a couple of things. Um, like to wish you a happy Cinco de Mayo to those who observe Cinco de Mayo. Also, we have a construction meeting down at, uh, the Rose Bowl tomorrow morning at nine AM. If you're interested in learning what's going on with, uh, Grandview Reconstruction, please come down.
Councilmember Gendrich?
Well, I've been hearing for two and a half years about responsible pit bull ownership. One thousand, two hundred and forty pit bulls in Muscatine. That's a five-dollar fee, six thousand, two hundred dollars. I'm anxious to see that line backed up block after block after block, getting those pit bulls registered and being responsible owners here in Muscatine. And the five bucks to waive that fee? No. Too many people have done it the right way. I would not be, uh, in favor of giving someone a five-dollar coupon to do their pet license. Nope. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Osborne?
Well, I'd like to just say some great things about my adopted hometown. Been here about eight years and we really live in a great community in the middle of everything. Very unique access to the riverfront. Uh, we had a group here this week that we'll be talking about from the state of Iowa, who came here to give us some advice and, uh, professional advice on what do we need in our town? What do we need for the downtown specifically? And, uh, I think they came away very impressed with what we're doing. I'm very much looking forward to their feedback. Uh, sip and shop this Friday. Uh, Mother's Day brunch, uh, Sunday at the Merrill, uh, in the spirit of proving that I say we live in the middle of everything for less than the drive of a commute that you would have to work in a bigger city. To our east, we've got this weekend Fun Bundle Friday at the Putman Museum.